Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the October 22nd, 2018 Board of Commissioners Special Call Working Session. And we have seven topics today. So we'll jump right into them. And the first thing we have is an update on this Cobb Superior Court of Accountability Courts. I believe we have the pleasure of having Judge Reuben Green giving us that presentation. So if you have the podium.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to come, be with you here today to talk with you about the great works we're doing in the Accountability Courts and the Superior Court. I've got a number of colleagues here, fellow judges and staff. The staff are the ones that really do all the hard work and really help all the folks that are coming through our program. So I appreciate all of them being here. So for many years, what we've done in the criminal justice system, as you all know, what we've done is we've basically tried to lock our way to safety. We've tried to put as many people in custody for as long as we can to try to keep the rest of our community safe from them. That's what we've literally done for years. But what we know is that 90-something percent of those folks, after they go into custody, they're going to come back out at some point back to our communities. If we don't treat the underlying issues, then what will happen is they'll come back out with those same issues and the majority of them will commit a new crime within three years. The recidivism rates are really kind of dramatic. We also know that in our community, we're on the front lines of the opioid crisis. It's affecting folks in our community each and every day. One in four people receiving prescription drugs, opioids, have substance use issues. One in four that are receiving those pain meds have substance use issues already. More than 40% of U.S. overdose deaths involve prescription opioids. Every 24 hours in this country, 91 Americans die from opioid overdose, including prescription drugs and heroin. 91 every 24 hours. Forty-six deaths involve prescription opioids. A thousand people are treated every day in this country for some sort of emergency rooms as a result of opioids or other prescription medication overdoses. A thousand a day. Overdose deaths from all types of drugs in 2000 were 17,000. Seventeen thousand overdose deaths in 2000. Seventeen thousand. In 2017, the overdose deaths were 72,000. Just in that short period of time, dramatic increases in overdose deaths. The highest increase in drug deaths has been synthetic opioids. Synthetic opioids, what they do is they change one ingredient of the opioid and then it's no longer an illegal drug. And they can sell them over the counter. The DEA tries to catch up with that, but they cannot keep up with as fast as they're changing the drug. So in 2010, just eight years ago, there were 2,000 deaths from synthetic opioids. Now there's 30,000 from 2,000 to 30,000 in that short period of time. Pretty amazing and staggering statistics. So obviously, our country, our state, and our community have a problem that we have to address. One of the solutions to these problems are the Accountability Courts. And in Cobb, thanks to the leadership of the Commissioners and my fellow Superior Court judges, we've had Drug Court for a long time. We've had a Mental Health Court, a Veterans Court, a Parental Accountability Court, and now we have an intermediate Drug Court as well that are addressing some of these underlying issues. So a couple of statistics about Accountability Courts. 68% of jail inmates, 68%, are diagnosed with substance use disorders. 14.5% of male inmates and 31% of female inmates have a serious mental health illness. Overall recidivism, folks are going to commit a new crime within three years of release from custody hovers around 66%. So two-thirds of them will commit a new crime within three years if these underlying issues are untreated. By comparison, those who graduate from an Accountability Court, like, for example, Family Treatment Court, we have one of those here in Juvenile Court, only 12% of them will commit a new crime within three years versus 66%. In our Mental Health Court, the highest recidivism rates of those that have completed Accountability Courts, it's 32%. So still, even in the mental health context, it's only one-third versus two-thirds that are committing a new crime. We do a lot of things that are unique in Cobb. One of those things is funding. Of course, as you all know, we write for grants, both state and federal grants, so that we don't use county taxpayer dollars as much. And then, of course, some of us are paid whether we do Accountability Courts or not. So those are expenses that are already there. But thanks to you all allowing us to write for state and federal grants, we've gotten numerous grants over the years that allow us to provide better care. Another thing as far as funding that we do in Cobb is we have 501(c)(3)'s that allow folks to donate tax deductible donations to help our courts, to cover the things that wouldn't be covered by county dollars, state dollars, or federal dollars. For example, a power bill goes out, or you need a bus pass, or some other transportation issue comes up. These 501(c)(3)'s, Restoring Lives Alliance Incorporated for all of our Accountability Courts, and then the Bravo Victor Fund for the Veterans Accountability Court, really make a difference in allowing us to fill those gaps. Finally, these are the statistics, those are the numbers. I know almost all of you, I think, have been to a graduation before of one of our Accountability Courts. What the numbers don't tell is what we experience every single day in the Accountability Courts. We see lives restored. We see mothers and fathers that are still taking care of their children instead of those children being in the system. We see them getting jobs at good employers in our community that are willing to hire folks that have criminal justice issues, really making a difference. One of the ones I heard just recently was, I heard one of the participants say that he'd been clean for nine months. It was just a regular court session. He said he'd been clean for nine months. And I said, "Well, when was the last time you were clean?" He said, "I've been using alcohol and drugs since I'm in high school." He's now 34, and this was the longest he'd ever been clean and sober. That's changing not just his life, but that's changing his family's lives, his kids' lives, his parents' lives, and our community. And he is a taxpayer instead of a tax burden, which really makes a big difference. We've got a video that we want to play, assuming we can get that working. Is it all set up? We're going to play the video here. It's about five minutes. And then if you all have any questions, we'd love to answer any questions for you. But thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you all about what we're doing here in Cobb for our citizens that are going through the criminal justice system. Thank you.
If this wasn't available to me, I wouldn't be here right now.
Navy veteran Richard Honeycutt doesn't sugarcoat it. His Veterans Court graduation was not just a life-changing experience, it was a life-saving experience.
I'd probably be dead. I would have killed myself.
Honeycutt's story is not unique. Cobb County's eight Accountability Courts have likely saved many other lives and positively changed hundreds of others. But in the beginning, those involved in the judicial system were far from convinced they would work. Tom Sharon's a former Cobb DA and is now Superior Court Administrator.
In my early days as a prosecutor, there really was only two options. It was either you're going to jail once you're convicted, or you plead guilty, or you're going to be on probation.
In the early days, I think a lot of us felt like that we shouldn't be giving in or giving anything to the people who violated the law. I think what we're seeing now is there are ways to do that without being soft on crime, but putting our focus on modifying behavior that leads to crime.
Now, we are seeing the criminal justice system actually addressing the root problem that these offenders have and trying to make a difference in their life.
The success of the Accountability Courts in Cobb and elsewhere has led to a recognition that a certain group of people coming into the courthouse, people charged with nonviolent crimes, could benefit from treatment rather than being sent to jail. Since the first Drug Court started here in the early 2000s, eight Accountability Courts have blossomed across Cobb's courthouses. And the judges leading those programs say it's been their most satisfying time on the bench.
Like the old saying says, "When the only tool you have is a hammer, every problem starts to look like a nail." For a long time, all we had was a hammer. Now we've got some other tools that we can use to help people and redirect them. I mean, these are folks who are nonviolent offenders. They've got a serious addiction problem. And if you address that addiction problem, not only can you take care of the issue of, you know, punishing them, but you can also redirect them in a way that you'll never see them again, which is our goal, that we just not see them anymore.
shorthand that you hear about Accountability Courts, you've probably heard many people say it, is that we need to lock up people we're scared of, and we need to treat people that we're mad at. And a lot of the people who are not just dealing with opioid addictions, but are dealing with addictions in general, we're not scared of those people, we're mad at them because they're not doing right. They're taking more from their communities than they're putting back. And I think these programs can help reverse that.
I think you're going to continue to see the growth of Accountability Courts for these special members of our population who really are not going to positively respond to the prison or probation, but really need to program such as these.
I think Judge Green, the team, the county for this program, given us the opportunity to really look in the mirror at ourselves and make the right choice in life. You know, we've all done enough wrong to know what right is.
We were treating them as felons, as criminals, when in fact, there was a better approach, and that was to alter their behavior, to get them off their addiction and make them useful citizens in the community.
Hundreds have graduated from Cobb County's Accountability Courts. The vast majority have avoided trouble since that day, a recidivism rate far lower than those sentenced to prison or probation. Those who have been through the programs make it clear they're anything but a cakewalk.
You have to be committed to change. It's not about the program, just Green, or anybody else. You have to want to change.
If you're not committed to changing your life, if you're not committed to the treatment, pick probation because it's easier. It's easier just to go into court, do what the judge tells you to do, and move on with your life. But most of those people are going to continue to use, and a lot of those people are going to be back in the system.
This program has done a lot for me. It's almost like when an artist does his painting. At times, he stands back and looks at his portrait, and he makes corrections when he does that. And this program allowed me to do the same, to stand back and to take a look at myself so that I can make corrections.
The news was going to happen.
Hearing the testimonial of the graduates who said, "I've got my life back," and those relatives actually standing up in front of the public saying, "I've got my son back, I've got my daughter back, I've got my dad back."
I mean what I say when I can't believe you haven't buried me in the backyard by now for everything that I've put you through. But you still love me and you respect what I have to do today to stay clean. And you and I have been through a very rough year together. But I think it's brought us closer than we ever could have been.
Ready?
We're finding that the blueprint of Accountability Courts, making people accountable for their actions, and addressing the problems that have caused their issues, that it works. And that blueprint can be adjusted to those citizens of those populations that are in need of that help.
Thank you for being good at what you do. By saving my life, you've probably saved someone else's life.
Sometimes punishment reinforces antisocial behavior and puts people in a cycle that they're not able to break out of. What we've seen with these Accountability Court programs is that there are individuals that these programs can help break out of that cycle. And once that cycle is broken, then they're on a whole different path.
And our goal is to return these veterans to being productive members of our society, supporters of themselves and their families, to make them taxpayers instead of tax burdens.
This is a tremendous, in my estimation, win-win situation for the community as a whole.
If you look at the cost-benefit analysis of treating people versus incarcerating them, and especially if you take into consideration the reduction in recidivism rates, the people who aren't coming back into the system, it's a great deal for the taxpayers.
On balance, what we're dealing with here is human lives and the safety of our community. And when we can avail ourselves of something that we've seen work that changes antisocial behavior into pro-social behavior, I believe that makes our community safer as a whole.
The treatment that they've given me was tremendous. I'm no longer suicidal, which was the reason it brought me into the program.
And for Navy vet Honeycutt, his graduation, his completion of the Accountability Court means a whole new lease on life.
With this available to me, I have a brand-new start.
Mr. Chairman, if you all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And that was Ross Cavan that did that video for us. So he's been really beneficial and helpful to us, so we appreciate that.
Could you introduce the other judges that are here today?
I do have a couple of them. I have Mary Staley Clark, who presides over the Mental Health Court, and I have George Krigger, who presides over the Drug Court. He was the one that started the Drug Court, I think, 15 years ago, give or take a little good while ago. So and then Tang Hill is not here. He is in the middle of a murder trial. And just got a question as we were literally walking over here, so he had to go back to work. So did I miss anybody else? Randy Harris is here from the Circuit Defender's Office. He's the one that helps to provide the lawyers, the defense side. And then, of course, Vic Reynolds provides, the DA, and the sheriff, of course, does a great job of giving us two deputies that work with all of our Accountability Courts and give us that consistency across the way. So we're grateful for all of them and their support as well as yours.
Quick comments from the board. Commissioner Burrow?
I'd just like to say thank you to all of the Accountability Court judges and staff. You do great work over there. I've been to many graduations and very emotional and inspirational. And thank you for all the work you do.
Yes, ma'am.
All of you.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, echo those sentiments. We appreciate the program being in the community. Beyond what you do, there's a community at large where citizens that come before you will eventually return to. So from a commissioner's perspective, it's better that they're better able to return and be positive aspects of our community after they see you. So thank you for what you do. I know it's an option. You don't necessarily have to do this, and I know it's a lot more work, but it goes a long way.
Thank you.
And County Manager, I believe that you're working with the judges on the reallocation of the plus-up that the board approved in July of the new budget?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Myself, Bill Volkman, and Tom Sharon have been working to revise the funding stream.
Okay, great.
And we'll be bringing something forward to the board in the next couple meetings.
Commissioner Rott?
I just wanted to respond to Judge Green sending us a note about the 45 and 50.
Yes.
We have been looking at it with the OT in transit.
Good.
There's a whole big picture that we're looking at right now.
I recognize that.
But yeah, Tip Top had actually reached out to us also.
Good.
About that, about getting some of the workers over there.
They're a great employer, and, you know, a lot of our folks can't get a job anywhere other than that. So they really do a great service for our community. So we recognize you all have lots of demands on the decisions you have to make, and everybody's asking. So but we want to let you know how important it was to us. So thank you all, and thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you guys. We're available anytime. If you have any questions about how the justice system works in Cobb, or the Superior Court, or Juvenile Court, or I'm sure as well State Court, you know, we're happy. You just give us a call, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have at any point. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next presentations by Dana on the Economic Development Policies and Procedures.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I'm here with a number of people to present some overview of all of the county's different economic development processes and incentives that are available. With me speaking will be Mary Ellen McCallahan from the State Department of Economic Development, as well as Sharon Mason, who is our Cobb Chamber President and CEO. In addition to that, we have a number of people from the Development Authority, the county, and from the chamber here, Nelson Jeter, Clark Hungerford, both with the Development Authority of Cobb County, Amanda Blanton, who is the Director of Economic Development at the Cobb Chamber, and of course, Michael Hughes and his staff in the county's Economic Development Department. I wanted to thank everyone for being here, to participate in this, and help answer any questions the board may have about economic development. What we're going to do is just kind of go over briefly some of the importance of economic development and why we do it. Then we'll kind of get into some of our internal processes with community development, some of the processes with the Development Authority, and then just try to show you some project analyses to show the investments that we make in economic development and how that has positive, long-term financial impacts for Cobb County. So with that, I would ask Mary Ellen McCallahan to please come up and give us a brief overview on state's perspective on economic development and why it's important at the local level.
Thank you. Excuse me. I don't need it. Thank you for letting me be here today. It's a pleasure. I've been asked to address two particular topics, and I'll be glad to take any questions you might have otherwise. One is about local incentives versus or along with state incentives. For example, when we combine state incentives and local incentives, it gives such a better offering to the project and to the competition. It ups the ante. It shows that the community has skin in the game. I know that's an old phrase, but it works every time. It shows the prospect that you are truly interested in having this particular company here, either new location or expansion. The state, of course, can't abate taxes, but the taxing authority can. So when we have our job tax credits and R&amp;D credits and all the other incentives we can give on top of your tax abatements, if it applies, or on top of any other special things that Cobb County likes to do, you know, you can waive fees, and you know all the things a county can do. So whatever makes you more outstanding than your competitor, which could be another county in Georgia or a county somewhere else in the world, our package together tells the story. And sometimes there are expansions or even projects that a state incentive doesn't qualify. So a local incentive would, no matter what it is. It might not be money, or it might not be something in particular that costs, that has a lot of value, but something that they need that you can deliver. So the fact that we are partners, though, whenever there is a prospect in Cobb County, the fact that we work together with your great team has been fantastic, which leads me into the other topic of confidentiality. And there is absolutely nothing more honorable than trust. And when there is so much sensitivity surrounding a project and a business and its needs and wants and desires, it's got to stay confidential. It's absolutely vital that, for the company and for the community. Of course, you know, we use code names, and there are all kinds of code names that are selected to, when you talk about a project, you say that code name, and nobody knows. If you're in the hall talking to someone who just happened to walk by and who is crucial to the project, and you say, "Oh, code pink and blue said that they're going to come visit next Friday." Nobody knows who we mean but us to, and that's what's so important. There are non-disclosure agreements that we all sign. Of course, the state can't sign a company's non-disclosure agreement. They sign ours, but you, as a community, can sign the company's. The local media and the politics, they have to step aside because if there's confidentiality, it should not be broken. And there's dangers of social media and networking sites. We know, we've heard of a couple of instances where there was a prospect in town, and someone took a photo and said, "Hey, visiting this restaurant with company X." That was on social media. That was not good. So an honest, probably innocent mistake, I'm sure, but you have to be very, very careful with social media and any kind of prospect, any kind of business that you're working on. Another reason it has to stay confidential is because what if it's a relocation, say, from New Jersey to Atlanta to Georgia? Say it's a consolidation. There are hundreds or thousands of employees all over the country that don't know their jobs are going to be taken away or being asked to relocate. They don't know that yet, but the company has to, sometimes a year in advance, come and talk with us and say, "Hey, this is what we're looking for." Has to stay confidential because of this. And then they don't want their competitors also to know what they're doing. We can all understand that. I remember working on a huge expansion up in Johns Creek, and we kept it confidential, and the investigator, the reporters kept calling. And of course, we couldn't say a word. We never spoke a word. I would have locked myself in the basement, and I would never have said a word about this expansion. All of a sudden, there it is in the paper, the money, the jobs, everything. Well, the company is huge, and it's publicly owned, and it has to report these kinds of expansions to the SEC. Well, the investigative reporter saw the reports of the SEC because they're public, and there it was in the paper. The company was not angry. Everything was fine, but that's just something that you have to remember, too. So when you go into something like this, think about all of the outlets that can possibly get this kind of information to help you keep it confidential. And I will praise Cobb County. I think one of the greatest secrets ever was the relocation of the Braves. It was so secret. It was very impressive. And that's pretty much most of the economic developers, when we saw the headlines in the paper that day, that they were leaving Atlanta, said, "Did you know? Did you know? What?" So congratulations to keeping a secret.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
In your experience, has there ever been a relocation of a company without incentives?
Yes.
And what would drive that decision by a company?
Well, they might not have an eligible NAICS code, for example. There are only certain companies, certain types of business sectors are eligible for, say, the job tax credits. Now, if you're in a special zone, like an opportunity zone or military zone, that's different. But they didn't go in a zone, and they didn't quite meet maybe the job threshold of Cobb County. Since you're a Tier Four, your thresholds are the highest at 25, maybe they were hiring 20 and wouldn't qualify for the job tax credits. Maybe they didn't have any R&amp;D, so they weren't getting any R&amp;D credits. So those kinds of things. And of course, it's not big enough to have any kind of discretionary incentive. For example, if the county does not do a tax abatement, then we can't do the REBA grant. So we have to be partnering with that. So there are times when incentives wouldn't apply.
Okay. So does the size of the company, like for instance, I hate to say this, but we're already, you know, on film here, there was an article in one of the media today about a railroad company coming to Atlanta.
I read that.
And it was pretty detailed. So the reason I bring this up is that one of the issues that we had when Tyson Krupp was coming here was that they had not had a chance to talk to their employees yet about the relocation, which is why they wanted confidentiality. And I certainly understood that part, and we respected that. But apparently, that was not an issue for this relocation because, you know, they're in another state entirely, and they're indicating that they're going to have to move their whole operation down here. So they kind of got out in front of the story with that one. But that being said, the larger the company, that would probably be one of the major reasons they would relocate, is they'd have to have some kind of abatement or incentives to make a move of that nature. Would you say that's probably a reasonable comment?
I think that could be one of the reasons. Another could be market.
Oh, okay.
And we have such a logistics hub here as well. So that changes. You know, Atlanta didn't used to have that. Georgia didn't used to have that. Now we do. So that's another factor.
Okay. Commissioner Rott?
So a lot of times, as Commissioners, we'll get emails from citizens who ask the question, "Why does the state, or the county, or whoever, give incentives or things like that to bring people from another location to an industry that may knock mom-and-pop operations out of business?" You know, so they say that, you know, "Yeah, you're bringing new jobs in, but, you know, you're bringing this big company in and taking the little companies out." Is that factored into the decisions when the state is looking at offering incentives?
Typically, no, because first, this is America, and anybody can, you know, bring any kind of company they want, whether they go through the state or the county and ask for incentives or not. But having said that, a smart economic development team like the one you have takes care of your small businesses, your mom-and-pops, and gives them all the support that they can. Now, when a big Walmart comes in, I remember I was in Eastman and in Dodge County and Sumter County when Walmart came in, and it closed a few of the little shops downtown. There was absolutely nothing we could do about that, but we certainly wanted that other piece of economic development as well. I think it's a risk that every business owner takes. It's, to me, it's kind of sad, but hopefully, there is something that can be done. Maybe there's something special the small business can do, which is this team will be talking with them to say, "Have you thought about another market, another product, maybe different customer service?" All kinds of things that maybe could differentiate them from the big box that's coming.
Ms. Weatherford.
Thank you. Along those lines, I mean, I've not had that question asked me in the 16 years or so I've been about smaller businesses, but I've had many questions asked about why are we doing it in the first place? And typically, and I understand, and I'm assuming you can elaborate on it, but it's usually competition. They're looking at multiple locations and they're trying to get the best offer they can and they're not zoned in on any one location like Cobb or Atlanta or Georgia. They could be looking at Houston or Charlotte or Nashville or whatever, which typically the ones we compete with, I think. So has that been your experience as well? It's usually a competitive market and we have to compete or are we not going to get them at all?
Yes, usually it's competitive. Even expansions are competitive. Sometimes they're not competitive. They know they have to be in Atlanta in the metro area. They know they have to be here because of market or the airport. So sometimes that, and if they're still eligible for incentives, they would get them. But yes, when it's, when it's competitive, and now a community or a state, they don't have to do incentives. This is completely our own choices, of course. But when you're in that game, then you do want to, if you want this, this particular business, then you'll one-up or you'll give what you can because of course, you know, I'm preaching to the choir, you always look at your ROI first before you do anything. And if it's going to work for you, then you stay in the game. If not, I've been in situations where, when I was a chamber exec in South Georgia, we had to say no a couple of times because the other state went so high, we knew we couldn't, we had a line we couldn't cross. So, yes.
Ms. Cupid.
I'm good. I appreciate the information you're sharing. I think you came down to one of our meetings in Mappleton once and spoke with residents about the significance of incentives and economic development at the state level. Appreciate you being on in the community.
You're welcome, anytime.
And we want to thank the governor. You know, we know he has a challenge of distributing to 159 counties.
Right.
It's a real hard equation.
Right.
But I know, I probably speak for the board here, we really appreciate the efforts he has made and done and accomplished in bringing development to Cobb County in the form of economic growth.
Right.
Appreciate what he's done and also the staff, because I know you're a large part of making those recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great job there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCallhand. I did miss one individual. We do have Karen Halassee here, who's also with the Development Authority. So Ms. Halassee, thank you for being here and joining us today. We appreciate it. Now, if we could have Ms. Sharon Mason come up and talk about Select Cobb and the Cobb Chamber's role in economic development.
Thank you, Dana. Good afternoon. One of the things that makes Cobb County so special is the strength of our partnerships and our teamwork. And there's so much that we do to collaborate and work together, and I think Select Cobb is such a great example of that. And we all remember, prior to Select Cobb, prior to six years ago, we were bringing in probably 500, 1,000 new jobs a year. And now collectively, because of the work of the team and the Select Cobb team is not only our chamber, but Dana, his entire team, so many others, our cities, our development authorities, so many others that are CIDs that are part of this, the many investors that are part of Select Cobb. Now collectively as a team, and of course, the state with Mary Ellen and her entire team, collectively as a team, we have brought in close to 26,000 new jobs that equate to over 2.6 billion in private new investment. And that is because of the proactive approach to job creation that we've had, and that has made a tremendous difference. So I want to touch on a few things. Mary Ellen really spoke to a lot of the reasons behind the incentives and we're continuing to see that with other states that we compete with especially, that do throw incentives there, and that is a big reason behind it because we usually are down to between us and another state. And there are several states that we compete with for very similar quality jobs that we are attracting, that we want to make sure we continue to attract, especially as jobs continue to change in the future. And that confidentiality that Mary Ellen spoke about is so critically important and it makes all the difference about whether or not a project lands here or doesn't. Because if we have their trust and they know that we can make sure we go by the process that meets their needs for their employees and how they want to share that with their employees or any other process they have, that's absolutely critical to making sure that we can bring that across the finish line and go according to their timeline. Also want to touch on, a question was asked about the small business. Select Cobb, that is a major strategy for Select Cobb in our chamber to make sure we meet the needs of small businesses. And I'm very proud of the team, Dana and the entire team that have been a great partner in that and many aspects to make sure we're meeting the current existing needs of small businesses. Also want to commend this board because the incentives that you passed earlier this year in February to help small and existing businesses expand, we're seeing a major difference of that and that's going to keep helping our current companies. But we do put a lot of effort behind helping our existing companies, especially small businesses, expand. Also, when these companies come, there's a lot of benefit to small businesses because with those jobs, what happens is a lot of our, our small businesses can be vendors and be part of that and benefit from that. That's more people shopping in the stores. It increases the tax digest for our community and we've seen that continued increase because of the continued job expansion. But it's also many jobs for our citizens that they don't have to go downtown and get stuck in traffic to get to jobs. They can more easily get to jobs within their community and that plays a key role, having our jobs right here in Cobb County. So thank you again for the support of this board. Appreciate the partnership and we look forward to many great things to come with our Select Cobb strategy. Any questions?
Yeah, Sharon, could you introduce Trey?
You said Trey Sanders?
Is he here today?
I don't think, yes, no.
Oh, clearly I need my glasses.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing. I didn't have my glasses, so.
Well, he looks like Trey. So you're Trey for today.
Unfortunately, Trey is out of town, but very supportive and especially for small businesses.
So walk us through, like, just give the board an idea of, you know, when somebody calls you and says, hey, we're just going to come to Cobb, tell us what you do here.
Okay. Well, as a partnership, so we would be the main point of contact and depending on what their needs are, we will bring together all the partners and first look at site specifications based on what their needs are. It might be, they know a certain size of a building that they need. They might know that they're going to have a certain type of job, so they want more information from our great universities. But incentives are a key part of that conversation and companies will be asking about that because that's something that other states will also make sure that they provide. And so we'll bring those people at the table that need to be there according to the company. Of course, the more people we bring in, the broader that gets and we want to respect the company's needs for confidentiality. Again, to Mary Ellen's earlier point, to make sure that when they're making the decision, they can let their employees know at the right time so that that doesn't cause any issues for them. But we always bring together those at the table according to the company's needs and it's different for every single company. But incentives are a key part of that.
So you would argue that incentives are a major, a major key element to bring any company regardless of its size to Cobb County?
Yes, correct. It is because of the competition. That's a key part and we're seeing that. It ranked very high in Site Selector Magazine for a key reason that companies choose locations and so we've got to stay competitive. That's important.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thanks, Sharon. I'd like to commend you and the chamber staff for your support of the business associations. I believe we have 12 small business associations throughout Cobb, 12 or 13 maybe now, and the Keep It in Cobb program that I started in 2011 to keep business in Cobb and support our small business owners.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. That is, I'm so glad you brought that up because the Keep It in Cobb is a huge movement and we commend you for starting that. It's so important that we all support our local businesses and want to continue that trend, that momentum that you started. And I'm so glad you mentioned the business associations because those partnerships are very strong and we're going to continue moving, expanding those partnerships and expanding all we do for small businesses. We have a great example tomorrow night. We have a big partnership event at Six Flags actually with several neighboring chambers and all the business associations and many others involved, and that's a great example of partnership.
Any members of the board? You can step right in. That's your, that's your area tomorrow night.
We're going to be here. I wish you would have done it like on Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday.
Oh, I know.
We haven't been able to make it since we.
I know. We'll miss y'all and we'll have to work on that. No, no.
Well, if the next time you bring me down, it'd be put me in one of those roller coaster rides. That's the last time I'm going down there.
Okay, okay. We'll make a note.
It's just good to see all of us working together to help spur economic development in the county.
Yeah, Sharon, you've done a remarkable job just in your, you've been less than a year now, I guess.
Right.
But you really have maybe, you know, brought some breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
And your outlook and always, you know, praising the good about the county and working together. And I think that, you know, your effervescence is making a difference and making Cobb brighter and better every day. So thank you for all that you do and your staff.
Well, thank you. And same here. Appreciate the partnership. We actually just came back from our seventh strategic visit studying best practices and continue to be reminded that one of our greatest strengths is our partnerships and collaboration, how well we all work together.
Yeah, and if you could share, you know, share with the board your product from those trips, I think we'd appreciate that too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, look forward to those comments that you see in your.
Want me to share now or at a later date?
A later date. We've had a lot of moving pieces.
Run out of time. I understand.
But we appreciate it. I think we look forward to seeing those, seeing that effort.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. I will briefly go through the rest of the presentation as I know the board has a lot on their agenda today. Real quick, our philosophy on economic development is very holistic in Cobb County. We don't, incentives are part of it, but it's not the whole thing. It's also the incredible work that our Public Safety Department does to make sure we have a safe, secure place to live. It's Parks and Recreation and Senior Services providing incredible quality of life improvements to the people who live here in Cobb. And it's also the entire development team with DOT, Farm, Marshal, Community Development, Water System, all working together in order to make sure we have consistent and dependable regulations and are enforced equally across the board. All of these really come together to kind of set Cobb County apart from a lot of our competition and we take pride in that, that we have the system put together that really allows us to succeed. And lastly, and we'll go over these in just a second, the recent updates the board have made to our Economic Development Ordinance has really placed us in a regional leadership role as it relates to retaining and bringing jobs into Cobb County and to the Atlanta region. So that is something commendable that we should all be proud of. What we do, economic development, we do it to attract and retain jobs. We do it to support small businesses and of course, the coordination is the most important part of it. One of the things that we've done in cooperation with the chamber is redoing our quarterly roundtables where we have state, local and regional partners come together to showcase the assets that we have in Cobb County and what we do for economic development and highlight that so we can continue to increase the number of jobs that come into our community. Here are a list of all the incentives that are a part of our Economic Incentives Ordinance. I know the board knows these very well. I'm not going to go over these in any detail. I just wanted to show that the way that we've really taken an effort to have a palette of different materials that we can really target towards different businesses so that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach to economic development. Our process for economic development, usually the state will go to Select Cobb and let them know about a prospect coming in. Select Cobb will coordinate with the county if it's an unincorporated Cobb County. Of course, we have a code name that's provided to it and application is provided to the company. It's reviewed to make sure it is eligible for incentives and what incentive eligibility criteria that would be. We put it through a model to determine what the rate of return would be for the county and then we coordinate with other departments to talk to them about the different incentives becoming available. Finally, after that's done, Finance Department reviews it to make sure it is accurate. Once Finance has, has kind of confirmed that, then we'll go through the process of approvals, which includes the county manager, the district commissioner and the chairman. After all, if all three of those individuals have approved it, then it'll go through with an official incentive offer, which is provided to the company. After the incentive offer is provided, a legal document is put together in coordination with our county attorney's office in order to actually have a legally binding agreement as to what they're going to create as well as what, what the county is going to give in regard to that, as it relates to the incentives. All of these have clawback provisions contained within them. So if they do not meet their obligations, then the county will be able to clawback the, some of the incentives that are provided. On an annual basis, we do do a lot of confirmations as to all these to ensure that the businesses are doing their part and meeting the obligations of the agreements that they've signed with the county. That's the county side of the incentives. So that, the, yes, sir.
I want to talk to this chart for one second because one of the concerns that I've had, and I think some members of the board also, and rightfully so, is on the far end recommendation from the economic development manager, the letter that's signed by the chairman, incentive offer. It's keeping the, keeping all members of the board informed about what we're doing. And I think that's just a matter of leadership style that I have is that, you know, I try to make sure that my commitment to the board is no surprises. So what are we doing to make sure that whenever we get this letter that you want me to sign, that we work this through the other commissioners, even if it's not in their district, even as a professional courtesy, letting them know that this is out there. So if there's some kind of a loose end that we might, might be aware about the process, they can address it, it makes it a better document.
Right now, we follow the process, which has the district commissioner involved. If the, if your desire is to broaden that, we'll certainly be happy to adjust the policy and have us provide some type of notification to the full board, sir. We're happy to incorporate that into our process.
Yeah, I just think it's important because it's a big county and sometimes this has consequences or impacts outside the district that, you know, as much as you, you and your team are well-connected, there are parts every now and then that, you know, the famous Johari window that you know about, but they, but they don't know about or vice versa. So I think that's something we need to look at real hard in implementing. It makes the board work together more cohesively because that means we're all speaking from the same sheet of music. And then when the letter is written, signed by the chairman, I know that we've had, you know, all aspects have been considered before the letter goes out. That's just, I'm listening, hearing from the other members of the board if I'm kind of on the right path here.
I appreciate you sharing that, Chairman, and I would just maybe flesh that out a little bit more of what that looks like. And we have a recent example of this where we talked through this as a board in your flow chart, Dana, that you provided and the application review period and recommendation, just even if you're stuck in there, just some type of communication with the other commissioners.
Sure, right.
That way you can keep in the flow of what you have. What I don't see here in the boxes and perhaps, Dana, you can help draw my attention to it, is how they are approved. I see there's an offer. If there's an offer and acceptance, is that, has that solidified the incentive package? Is there a formal approval that is required that is somehow not listed here of the entire board?
There is, there is the kind of, different business practices have changed as it relates to the actual approval of the economic incentives agreement. Prior, we were, we were bringing, after the offer letter was provided, then the chairman was able to sign off the economic incentives agreement. We have received a different opinion in regard to that. And in the last two incentives that have been brought forward at the advice of our county attorney, they have come forward for full board approval, ma'am.
Okay, so that would take place on what stage?
Prior to the execution by the county, which is under the economic incentives agreement, ma'am. The last bullet under, under that particular tab, the second to last bullet.
Okay. And forgive me for not being able to ask this as a question, so perhaps I'll share this as a, as a concern, that if this goes to the board, the board reviews it, then it goes to the county manager. Well, is the communication to the board, that's not approval, that's just a heads up.
Yes, ma'am.
Then you'll have a recommendation made by the three entities that are listed on the recommendation from ED Manager. Then you'll have an offer go out. If the offer goes out, you, we provided the offer, correct? And then, yeah, okay. And then I presume that that puts it on the person who could be awarded the incentive, the ability to accept.
That's correct.
So in their mind, what would, what would let them know that there's another step for this to actually be formalized and that this offer and acceptance, which would signify agreement could change?
That's usually communicated through Mr. Hughes in his office to let them know that the offer is out there. That's usually communicated through Mr. Hughes in his office to let them know that, that the offer is out there, but that the Economic Incentives Agreement would need to be executed in order to finalize it.
Executed, but would it, do they know that it would have to be reviewed and approved by the entire board?
Well, currently, it would need to be reviewed and approved by the entire board. And we would need to communicate that differently to our clients because of the change that has occurred as it relates to the approval process for Economic Incentives Agreements.
I really like your chart because I think it helps to delineate each of the steps involved. So, if somehow it was placed in there, what that specific action would be, that would be helpful. Because I would hate for us to have a potential business feel as if they've already been awarded something just from base from what I'm looking here. And they receive a letter, they receive an offer, they accept it, and then all of a sudden, something changes afterward. Even if that letter can just notify them, this is a preliminary offer subject to the review of the entire board.
And I think that's why it used to be the case where the chairman was signing the Economic Incentives Agreements because of the offer letter had already been provided, which was looked at as being a commitment of the county in order to provide these incentives. But with the change, we will certainly do anything appropriate as the board directs as it relates to how the board wants this process to flow through. And if it results in any, keeping consistent with the way that we're currently doing it, that's fine. If there is a different policy or process that the board wishes to have, we will, we will do what is necessary and make sure it's documented properly.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, with the change proposed by the county attorney, I think in a lot of ways, it's very much like mediation. When we go to mediate, the district commissioner will go do the mediation and when they come to terms, if they come to terms with the, the other side, there's an offer made with the understanding that it has to be approved by the full board. So, in a lot of ways, it's really no different than that.
Right, and I, I was gonna just recommend that once the recommendation from the Economic Development Manager goes to the county manager, the district commissioner, and the chairman, that recommendation could be discussed with each one of us that's not the district commissioner before the offer is made so that we could give input or suggestions or approvals or dislike or whatever with that and before the offer is made.
Certainly, the staff would prefer having a mechanism put in place where when we provide an offer letter, that we know we have the full backing of the board of commissioners because the business community is what they expect. They expect it when they have received an offer letter that the county is fully behind what is being offered by the county.
And the other suggestion that I had a while back when this was done was I think we need to consider the other tax abatements or incentives that they're receiving from the state and the Development Authority to weigh in on what we do as a third, last step.
Well, we certainly should be aware of the whole package. Is there any problem with us being aware of the whole package by this fourth step or recommendation for Economic Development Manager?
It, it depends on when the timing of the, the business does it. Sometimes they do the Development Authority incentives first. Sometimes they come to the county first and go through the county incentives process, and then later on, they decide it. So, we can provide information to the board about what we know at that point in time, but I don't think it's possible for us to look into the future and, and anticipate what the business may do. And we can only provide information on what we know is occurring at the time.
Well, the, the danger there, and I get what you're saying, all right? Because the business community is going to be the business community and they're going to look for the best offer. But in the end, if something has to come back to the board to be fully, to be approved by the board, first of all, it makes sense to do what we just proposed about making sure all the commissioners know about this. Because it makes no sense to put something out there that three steps later, we're going to vote against it. Okay? That sends a bad signal both to the community and to the business, and the business side of it, that we don't know what we're doing up here. But the second part is, is that if we don't have the whole package, all right? And then the, the Development Authority is going to do what it's going to do. It's an independent board. I get that part. But I think that it's important that we have as much of a pitch as we can have because if, 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 if the Development Authority is going to have a proposal that's going to have an impact on how we vote, all right, we might want to be made aware of that. All right? Now, again, I go back to everybody, you still need to have three votes. So, if, if one member of the board doesn't approve of something, that doesn't mean it's going to stop because they still need two more votes. But I think that if we can encourage everybody to get as, you know, much information aboard as soon as possible because ultimately, we're the ones that have to deal with the public. We're the ones they come to if they have an issue, and they expect us to resolve that issue. So, as much as I respect these independent boards and want to leave them in that exact position, the, the funnel comes back down to us. And I think the message we want to send here is that you, you have a process, but we deal with the whole picture. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to have an action that's going to impact on our ability to deliver incentives because the board is uncomfortable about the direction that we're, unless we're allowed, we're, we're granting abatements or things of that nature. That might have an impact on how we make a decision in our, in the board. They're out there, they're hearing me. But I think that, that gets, but having said that, we don't want to go down the road where we just start sending the signal that we don't want to have people come work here in Cobb County because we're a difficult board to work with and we can't seem to make up our mind about something and go day to day. So, Commissioner Weatherford.
Sure. And I think that sometimes, I mean, it's good to have all the information, but sometimes when we get involved, we slow the process down. I mean, we have independent boards, we have professional staff that's reviewed these things. And I think it's important to remember that but for this, we wouldn't have it. So, we're not giving up anything. What we're giving up is the opportunity to have a new business or new economic growth in our county, but for us doing this, we won't have that. So, we're only giving up the possibility of what could be at a location instead of what we know is going to be a location. So, you know, I'm perfectly content with the independent analysis. And the fact is, we're not giving up anything, but we're getting a lot in return for that.
And I have some examples of that in the, at the end of this presentation to show the return on investment the county makes for incentives that are provided.
Commissioner Robb.
I know it's going to be hard to believe, but I actually agree with Commissioner Weatherford.
Regerved, regerved.
But I also think it's important to remember that as much as the individual members of the board might want to have a say in where somebody goes, ultimately, it's the company that's going to decide whether or not the package that's being offered, the locations that are available, if that suits their needs. And they may not always coincide with what, you know, commissioners may want, where they want them to go. There is, there is not a way to get somebody, they've looked at site selections and all that. And if they have picked out a location in the county where they want to go, that's, that's not something that we get to decide.
Sure. And certainly, I, I don't see any discussion that is alluding that any commissioner is trying to select a site for a particular company. But what I do know is that our taxpayers are looking at total tax dollars in and total tax dollars out. And even if there's another entity involved, the critique that we received is why are we making certain budgetary decisions knowing that we have been making other incentives that have limited the amount of tax dollars coming in? So, I agree that nobody wants to slow this process down, but I think it's important for us to be, be fully aware and convinced in our minds that we were doing the right thing when we asked people to support us in the budgetary decisions that we're making. You know, I'm hoping that in, in us coming together, and I don't know what, I don't know what the best process is. I'm hoping today will help bring light to that, but to the extent where we do know who's giving what incentives and, and keeping that in mind as we're giving our incentives, it just helps us to be more sure as we're dealing with those who are holding us accountable for what's coming in and what's going out.
Sure.
And I guess going back to my statement is that the fact is that we're not limiting our revenue coming in. We're not going to get it if we don't do this. And so, it's not, we're keeping taxpayers from getting what is due to them. What we're doing is getting them more. I remember distinctly when I was on city council and I worked with this board and the school boards to get a tax allocation district in Acworth, which was an inert landfill with methane gas and flames burning. And we fought and fought and fought to figure out if we're going to give them tax incentives for 10 years in order to build that and redevelop it. I know that's one of the things you look at when you do this. And from $30,000 a year in property tax to this county, they're getting $330,000 now. And to me, that was a but for. But for this incentive, that wouldn't be there. It would still be an inert landfill with a flea market on top of it. So, sometimes you have to look beyond giving up taxes. You're giving up taxes you don't have.
I hear you.
And what you do is you eventually gather them back, but you get the economic halo effect. If you look at that one particular development, the halo effect around there is unbelievable. Every major retailer is within two miles of that place because of what this board did and what the city did and what the school board did. So, I, I caution the, the board at all, like to look at the bigger picture. And now, look at what you might be giving up, but look at what you're going to get if you don't do it. So, just my thoughts.
With that, what will be helpful to note, I hear this term but for. The only time I've heard of but for analysis has been associated with the TAD program. And if, if that is the case, then I think that it should be very clear about what that type of assessment or analysis is as we get in.
If the board will allow, at the end of this presentation, I can go over some concrete examples to show the type of ROI the county receives from incentives. And I think that will answer a lot of questions.
Okay, ROI versus but for, I mean, I'm, they're, they're, they're related, but they're distinct. Because one is saying that this will not happen, and, and I was told that this is part of my time being here that, at least for the TAD, that there was only consideration given if a TAD was applied to something that would only happen but for that TAD.
That is, that is correct for tax allocation districts. For other economic incentives, I think this is more about the global competition that's happening for jobs.
And return on investment.
In return on investment, where we're looking to make sure that the investment the county is making on this particular incentive has long-term financial benefits to the county.
Let's go ahead and on step four here, the recommendation, the Economic Development Managers make the changes there that we ensure that all the commissioners are made aware of the proposal, even if it's not in their district.
Yes, sir.
And that keeps us all in tuned. But I also want to make a point about what Commissioner Cupid said, all right? I sit here today, all right, because of the fact that we are answered to the people. So, you can have an ROI argument all you want to, but the ultimate judge about that ROI are the people. And the moment that you cut them out of a discussion, at least in this county, all right, you can throw the ROI out the window. So, we've got to keep remembering that it's not all about the money. It's about who we answer to, and we answer to the people. So, we have to be able to articulate why we're doing what we're doing. And I have no problem that we're doing just exactly that. We're just trying to refine the process to make it even better.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very quickly, Development Authority is created by the state, it's appointed by the county. I think we all know that. Here is the process for the Development Authority. I'll, I'll give some commandments to the MDJ who did an actually very good job of laying up the entire Development Authority process as it relates to it. I think one of the points of note here is at the very end of the top line where it says "letter from chairman", that's important and it's something that the Development Authority requests, but it's not for the Development Authority. It's actually for the Board of Tax Assessors because the Board of Tax Assessors ultimately determines if the, if the tax abatements will happen, and they want to make sure that the county is aware of it prior to them making a decision. Also in here is a lot of economic analysis that's done through the Georgia Institute of Technology to ensure that the fiscal impact of this will be positive in nature.
Okay, well, that goes back though to the statement before, the letter always said "supported" the tax abatement, all right? But all the board really wants to know is that we're acknowledging the tax abatement.
Yes, sir.
It's an important distinction in that word.
Yes, sir.
Because by, that's right, but the point is, is that we're speaking for the board. And that's been the whole issue is that two commissioners can't speak for the board. So, the letter should acknowledge, reflect that we're aware of it. But when you start saying support, that means, that tells a bit, that tells the outside world that the whole board supports you. That's just not true.
Very good, sir.
All right, so, I mean, if, if they want the support of the board, then that means they got to bring it forward as an agenda item. But if they're just looking to want to know that we're aware of the fact there's tax implications, I don't think that's it. But again, in that same process, right, the whole entire board needs to know that letter's going out there acknowledging that we're aware of the tax implication, again, to keep the whole board informed about what we're doing here.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that the Development Authority policy that the chairman signs off?
That is part of the Development Authority process, and it was at a request of the Board of Tax Assessors, ma'am.
Okay, so, we've never had input.
These letters have never come forward for board approval since we have done these.
So, what are you saying?
But it's all part of the process, but the process doesn't stop if there's no letter.
Well, if they don't, if they don't have your approval, does it?
I don't know. That's what we're here to discuss.
Yes, this is why I don't understand what role we play because we have had businesses come here with respect to Development Authority.
Nelson, come up to the podium.
If the county does not provide a letter, then it would be up to the tax assessor whether or not they would pursue the abatement or not. And Mr. Jeter would address that.
Why would it matter? I mean, clearly, there's a tax abatement because you requested it. Why would the board have any say in that or not, other than the fact that you're making us aware of it? Why wouldn't you just send us a letter from the Development Authority saying we're going to be submitting a bond request and in there is going to be tax abatement implications, and we want you to be made aware of that? I don't understand why it is the board hasn't submitted a letter, all right, or the chairman does.
Well, I mean, we would acquiesce to whatever the board directs us to do, but the past practices are that the Board of Tax Assessors has requested that that sort of letter be put in place. But it's a requirement, not necessarily of the Development Authority, but of the Board of Tax Assessors.
They don't afford to anybody.
Ms. Chairman, it, it seems to me that what's going on here is that the Board of Commissioners is being asked to sign a letter indicating our approval of something that we have no control over.
Right, exactly.
Which, I mean, if the letter was clearly the intent that the chairman and the district commissioner are informed. But the reality is the Development Authority can do whatever they want without the board.
Right.
The Board of Tax Assessors can do whatever they want without the board.
Right.
I mean, the only reason that the board votes on certain things is because we're the taxing authority, and that's the way the state law is written, I mean, the agenda item that we have tomorrow night. But the fact of the matter is, the Development Authority is an independent authority.
So, is the tax assessors.
Right.
The tax assessors.
So, I mean, they don't need our permission.
Right.
It shows units.
Well, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I mean, if the chairman and the district commissioner are initially something, they're not approving anything for the board, they're not speaking for the board because the board doesn't have any authority and doesn't have a responsibility to approve something.
That's true, but the general, the impact on the board, though, is that it impacts our revenue and the general fund.
Right, but even, even if the board didn't want to do it, the Development Authority and the Board of Tax Assessors could still do it if they wanted.
We're conflating two processes. These are two different charts we're looking at. One of them was Cobb County-controlled incentive. This is, yes, which we do have control over.
Right, that one we do, but the Development Authority, we don't.
So, why don't we?
And I think that what's happening is, well, I think what's happening is that the two are getting joined together when there shouldn't be. Obviously, the county incentives before anything goes out from the county indicating that there's an offer, yes, the entire board should, should know about it, or, but then the Development Authority, they don't need our permission.
Well, all I'm saying is take the, take, take the middle of the road here, all right? The, we don't, the board, the tax, the Board of Tax Assessors can ask any one of us, doesn't mean we have to do it, okay? But we, in the past, given them a letter for some reason, I guess so they'd know that we know about it. But what's come, what's happened, though, is that the letter that was just giving me some discomfort is that they say we support it. Well, that to me means that I have, I have the support of the board. I don't have the support because I haven't told three members of the board about it. That's my problem. So, I think what we need to understand here is if we're going to, if we're going to contain this policy, we just need to acknowledge, you know, tell the Board of Tax Assessors, yeah, we're, we're aware of it. Thank you very much.
And, and, and that, and we have already changed the practice on that, sir.
Right, but, but again, that letter should, you know, should go to the other commissioners to let them know that, that we're aware of it because eventually, if this Development Authority abatement is approved, then that has an impact on revenue stream for the, for the board, for the county because it impacts our collection of general fund dollars. Now, the ROI, if, if it all works out, the ROI will be worth it. But again, I think the whole thing here, the key, the thing that I want to emphasize here is that the entire board should be made aware of everything that's happening in the county. All right? aware of everything that's happening in the county, all right, that has kind of implications. And I don't care if the thing is being built in District X, it will have implications in the other three districts, one way or another, because it brings in revenue to the county that we're going to reallocate throughout the other three districts. That's my argument. It may be an indirect connection, but it's still a connection, which is why the letter should reflect that we're aware of it, but the word support shouldn't go in there because I haven't brought it as an agenda item.
Very good, sir.
So Chairman, help me put this in context, because we had, again, another recent example where a business was reaching out to board members with respect to wanting support through the development authority. Why are they reaching out to us if we have no role?
Again, it has to do with a request by the Board of Tax Assessors who have requested some type of notification from the county that they are aware of the request being made. That is what the, my understanding of the purpose of that letter is for.
You probably want to know that we're aware, then put in the letter, we're aware.
Yeah, they should put in there, okay, and we say, yeah, thank you, we're aware of it. But that, this, what's happened is, it's evolved into something where it seems like we have a hand in the process, and we don't, because they're an independent authority.
I agree with Commissioner Ott. We don't, they can do whatever they want to because
they're independent. But if they want us into it, then we have to make sure that reflects the will of the board. And the will of the board is, is that we acknowledge the letter, but that's all we can do is acknowledge it, and the information contained therein.
Very good. I'm going to skip this slide, because I know you have a lot to cover. This is much more about other aspects of our economic development partnership and how important it is between the state, county, nonprofits, select Cobb, development authority, how we all work together on all of this. We also work together on marketing the county to make sure that everyone outside of Cobb knows what an incredible business climate we have, and that we desire to have their business come and locate with us. So I think what you have all talked about is, how do these have long-term impacts? So here is an abatement that was provided in 1998 for a company called UCB. Total project cost was $50,000. The abatement and county incentive was $1.9 million.
$50 million.
$50 million, excuse me. You're correct. I did miss three zeros there. I looked up quickly. $50 million total project cost, $1.9 million abatement. The appraised value over that time period was $86 million for that property. What we did is, we looked at other properties around there to kind of get a sense of the market of similar properties around there. In this particular case, there was actually a negative growth rate on some of these surrounding properties, resulted in a negative $500,000 difference in this. So this had an impact of $86 million for a $1.9 million investment. All of that is new revenue that would not have been realized had it not been for the particular incentive or a different set of revenues for not that incentive, based upon what's happening in the market around it. This is another one called Print Pack. $40 million total project cost, $3.6 million abatement. This was in 2007. Total appraised value over that time period was $91 million. The market growth was $2.3 million. So that resulted in a total impact of $262 million for that particular incentive. This is one, Quintiles, also now called IQVIA. $20 million total project cost, small $450,000 abatement. Sounds small compared to the rest. The county was able to have a $317 million economic impact for a $500,000 abatement. So these are just showing the, how these types of abatements can have such a large, long-term impact on the fiscal health of Cobb County. And all of this money being brought in goes towards public safety, parks and recreation, all of the services that the county provides to help make sure that we have a holistic community. So with that, I will answer any additional questions the board may have about economic incentives. And certainly, if you have any questions for any of the other speakers, I am sure they'll be happy to chime in as well.
I think we're good. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Think you still stay up there, don't you?
Yes, sir, and I'll go as quickly as I can, because I think all of my, our, all of my friends.
Is there anyone else out in the audience that came to support, that supported your discussion here that we didn't, that didn't get to come up and chat to talk?
Yes.
Hey, Clark? Yes, of course. Yes.
If I could, take one second.
Time. I'm just kidding, Clark. Of course you can.
I might need a little bit more than that. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As most of y'all know, I have the opportunity to chair the development authority, and I thought I'd just give you a little history as to the letter that you're talking about, the support letter. Prior to, about 10 years ago, we didn't have much in the way of any sort of incentives going into the county, because there wasn't much going on into the county. We had an opportunity that came forth that was asking for some tax incentives, tax abatements, and it didn't go very well. We didn't do it. The company didn't come to Cobb County. And we decided that in a way to try to avoid that going forward, because there was a lot of misinformation going on about that, that we tried to put together a procedure by which we thought all the players involved in it would have a say, an acknowledgement of what was going on. And that's where, when we worked with the school board, we were trying to get something to make sure they were aware. And it wasn't just Cobb County School Board, it'd be the Marietta School Board or any other education that might be affected by property tax incentives. We wanted to make sure that they were aware of it. So now we go before the school board, because any sort of tax incentive, even though, and I want to be sure everybody knows this, and I think Commissioner Weatherford made the best statement, you don't lose taxes on this. What happens is, you don't get as much as you might if they didn't ask for a tax abatement. But the important thing is, if you don't do the incentives, and quite frankly, I wish we didn't have to do incentives, but you have to, to compete in today's society. So if you're going to do incentives, you do the best you can. And what that means is, you don't get as much, as I've said several times, you don't get 100% of something. You might get 100% of nothing, because nobody comes. But you might get as much as 50% of the increased value, which is a positive benefit to both the county and to the school board in such a way. So when we were recently at school board, question came up, how much are we losing? Once again, I pointed out, you don't lose anything. And in the Cobb Development Authority, we also require what are called pilot payments, so that whatever the property is generating in the way of tax revenue, at the time the incentive is asked for, and at the time the project is being asked for, the county and the school entity continues to receive that until the improvements are made. And that's either improvements in the building, building a building, doing tenant improvement, or buying additional equipment that they're asking for incentives on. Once that comes in, then the increased value is assessed by the tax assessors, put on the roll, and then it phases it at 10% each year for the next 10 years. But the important thing is, during that whole process, there is no degradation in the tax base. The county and the school entity continues to receive whatever they were before they started. And that's a very important thing. But the idea behind the letter of support was just simply to make sure that we gave a united approach, a united appearance to whoever is looking at coming into the county, that everybody was aware of it, was in favor of it. And if anybody had some opposition to it, we tried to deal with it, to make sure that we did a good thing for the county. So that's where it came from. My feeling is, and I can't speak for the tax assessor, I think as long as they knew that the Board of Commissioners was aware of it, they would probably be happy with that. But that's a question you would need to ask them, or we'll be happy to ask them on your behalf, just to be sure that we smoothed that process out, since we were kind of the ones that put it together. So be happy to do whatever it takes to help y'all with this. But we look forward to bringing some other projects into the county with the help of the state. I think if you read the recent Atlanta Business Chronicle about Governor Deal and a lot of the things that are happening in the state, you see Cobb County very prominently displayed in that, and I think it's good for the county. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you. I appreciated your explanation of how the program works.
Sure.
It would be very helpful to have something documented that showed the pilot as it was being applied until the improvement was made, and then to just articulate how, over 10 years, the tax would be assessed, and then ultimately payment for the taxes in full would occur at the end of that 10-year period. If I just had that documented as plainly, as simple as possible, I can share that with others, too, because it does help making that case as to why we're doing.
Basically, whatever it's on, the tax rolls out at that point in time that the project started, it stays at that until the improvements are finished.
And that person is paying that to the development authority?
They pay it to the development authority. We pass it on to the tax assessor.
Okay.
Or tax collector. And then it goes in, whatever the increased value is, let's say it increases $1 million. The first year, it goes in at 10% of that, which would be $100,000. The next year, you get it on $200,000. Another 30%, you get $300. At the end of 10 years, it's being taxed on the full value of that, and continues on into perpetuity or additional improvements promoted.
And are there modifications to that structure, or that is the structure that's applied?
That's the structure that's pretty much applied in most of the development authorities in the state of Georgia, but for sure in Cobb County.
Yeah.
It's also important to know that we do have a clawback provision in there. So if they don't bring the jobs or the investment that they say they will do, there is a clawback provision in that, so that there, that would be the only chance you would have of having degradation in the tax revenue.
Okay.
And we make sure that we set up ways to avoid that through our memorandum of understanding.
Okay, yes, I think I've seen that language in there. I just, again, if there was just even like a one pager or half a pager that had that, it could go a long ways.
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Clark.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good work.
A little bit more than a second, but I apologize.
No, that's fine. It's a Cobb, one second.
Very briefly, sir, I've had a number of commissioners come to me about some concerns about short-term rentals, and the county has put together some research and a brief program that we think can address this issue that the board has brought up. So what are short-term rentals? Short-term rentals are part of the sharing economy. It's very similar to getting an Uber or a Lyft to come and pick you up and bring you somewhere. That displaced taxis. The sharing economy is technology-driven, peer-to-peer services. In the case of short-term rentals, it's being used to rent a room or a home from an individual that owns it, and similar to what you would do with a hotel. So it's kind of in a competition with our lodging and hotel industries. There are a number of platforms that provide these services. There's actually over 500 different companies doing this in the marketplace right now. Some of the biggest ones are Airbnb, Booking.com, HomeAway, VBR, things like that. In Cobb County, the largest player is Airbnb. Market penetration, so within short-term rentals, it's about $18 million across the United States in 2018 of how much money is being generated through short-term rentals. Eleven point, it's expected to increase, but at decreasing percentages. So the percent increase is not, is going to kind of lower as far as how sharply it's going to grow over time because of the number of people that are entering into the market. So looking at some of the renter profiles of who's using these services, you can see the vast majority of the people using these services are people between the ages of 25 and 34. So it's a younger populations who have really gravitated towards these type of short-term rentals and using this as a mechanism for stays across the United States. So right now, in Cobb County, there are 964 active short-term rentals being marketed through the various, through the various shut sites. A private company who's a data provider called Host Compliance provided these numbers, and that was as of September of 2018. These 964 include those within cities as well, which we would not be able to regulate in unincorporated Cobb County. So the challenge is, why is this a big deal? This is a big deal because it's of a lack of accountability that happens with short-term rentals. You can have some that create noise, safety issues, trash, parking issues. We have complaints from our hotels who say that it's an unfair advantage because these short-term rentals aren't paying all of the hospitality and hotel motel taxes. We have neighbors calling and complaining because of the impact it has on neighborhoods. So you have a lot of issues that are kind of coming up because of the short-term rental proliferation, as we have seen with many other technology-driven platforms. We have to remember there's some positive impacts as well. Bringing these young people into our, into our community to visit, it's bringing tourism dollars, additional tax revenue, and then spin-off developments that come from tourism. There are a number of companies throughout municipalities across the United States that are doing regulation of short-term rentals, including three which we used as peer reviews within Georgia, Hall County, Sandy Springs, and Savannah. So looking at the city of Savannah, they've been doing this the longest. They require short-term rentals to obtain a certificate. The city documents this, and the city receives documentation on the rental agreements used by the short-term rental. They require insurance, a designation of a rental agent, which is an individual who can be at a site within two hours in order to address any complaints that come from neighbors. They also have standards for the granting and denial of applications. And then, of course, violations for payment, for noncompliance of the ordinance. Hall County, again, Lake Lanier is primarily in Hall County. They have seen a proliferation of short-term rentals on a lot of the vacation homes around the lake. So they came up with some very specific restrictions as it relates to different types of residential categories in proximity to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers property. Each one of these short-term rentals have, also have to have a local contact person, and a person designated responsible for guest actions in case it kind of goes awry. And applicants are required here to pay a, to obtain a business license and pay a hotel motel tax. Sandy Springs has probably the simplest of all of the ordinances. I think their ordinance is about one paragraph long, but it's also very effective. It applies to owner-occupied structures only. All of the parking has to be commented on the lot, not allowing on-street parking. Requirements to abide by occupancy restrictions for residential uses. And finally, they require everyone to obtain an application fee, a business license, as well as hotel motel taxes being paid to the city. One thing to remember, and from our conversations with ACCG, this bill will come back in the next legislative session. That is House Bill 579. This is a 2018 bill by the Georgia General Assembly that is looking to provide some state guidance on overall short-term rentals. One of the things that we anticipate happening is that the, if House Bill 579 does get approved, that they probably will not require application fees for short-term rentals statewide, which would have an impact on Sandy Springs, Savannah, and Hall County's ordinance, since all of them require the submittal of an application fee for that. But they would, I think it would allow for the business licenses and hotel motel taxes to be paid. So Host Compliance and other vendors are really jumping into this game across the country, and they are providing a service where they're able to go into the Airbnbs and the VRBOs and other, and abstract data on the site-specific locations of who is renting, who is renting rooms or homes in order for short-term rentals. They then sell that information to governments in order to allow for the regulation of short-term rentals. We wouldn't really not be able to regulate short-term rentals unless we had information on specifically where these are occurring. So this is, this is one mechanism for how, if the board decides to pursue this, one mechanism that we would be able to do it. The approximate cost for the basic service with these is around $25,000 a year to obtain the data that they extract from these different services. So staff does have a recommendation. We are prepared to bring forward a set of ordinances in the January-February code cycle that would allow us to regulate short-term rentals. We would certainly need to keep work with ACCG and GMA on House Bill 579, and I'll mention some advice at the end of this that they provided us last week, after we had already put this presentation together. We do think we should engage with one of these vendors in order to obtain the data necessary for monitoring activity, because we really will not be able to do it unless we obtain good data that will enable us to actually regulate the activity happening in these homes. This is something we could use as a collaboration effort with our six cities, all of whom have short-term rentals. And I know Smyrna has reached out to us and said that they are interested in this as well, and they're starting to look at regulation of short-term rentals as well. We figure if we are able to charge an application fee, do the business license, and require the business license, we have, would be able to generate enough money to pay the vendor for the data they're giving us, as well as hire two staff to monitor this particular program. We would need one code enforcement officer to do it, to manage the program, manage the application process, and then deal with any type of citations and violations that would occur through noncompliance. We would also need a GIS specialist who will be able to take the data we obtained from the vendor and geocode that and put it the vendor and geocode that and put it into a mechanism that would seamlessly work into our system to expedite the process for us. So we do think we would be able to hire all three of those if we can do both the application fee and the business license. I say that because the advice from ACCG is that if we're going to consider this right now, they're actually recommending that we wait to see what the General Assembly does, because they are... They fear that the General Assembly may approve a version of House Bill 579, which will remove our ability to do an application fee. Having run the numbers, if we're not able to do an application fee, I don't think we'd be able to properly manage short-term rentals, because we would not generate enough money for any of what I was just able to say. I don't think we would even reach the twenty-five thousand dollar mark in order to pay the vendor for these particular services. So we are prepared to move forward if that's the board's desire, but I also wanted to make sure I gave you the information from ACCG about what they are recommending for us as it relates to possible legislation by the state. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have on short-term rentals.
Mr. weatherford. Thank you. I have a couple of questions and then maybe a comment.
Yes, sir.
What do we define as a short-term rental?
Short-term rental is a stay less than thirty days.
All right. So if I want to rent my home out for the Super Bowl, I have to get a business license, pay hotel motel tax, et cetera, et cetera.
By the Super Bowl, no, sir, because there'll be no regulation in place by the Super Bowl. But after February 23rd of 2019, if the Board of Commissioners approves this, then yes, you would need to obtain a business license to rent your home out as... Through one of these platforms.
You know, I see this kind of analogous analogy to Uber, and they are taking business away from a taxi that I never ride anymore because the cars are terrible, the prices are high, and now I get the same service at a reasonable rate in a nicer car, regulated, whatever. We don't... We didn't worry about them. So why are we worrying about the hotel motel? Maybe they need to change their business model. I mean, I'm hotel motel guy, but now, all of a sudden, their two-hundred-dollar-night room with eight dollars plus, eight percent plus, all of a sudden. I just stayed at one, and it... Fees on top of it were almost as much as, you know, the room could be. So why are we getting this business to do that? I mean, to me, that's enterprise and action.
Understands, sir.
In my opinion.
Understands, sir.
Now, nuisance is one thing, and I think it ought to be... We ought to know what it is. But if a week rental from either one of us or you or whatever at the Super Bowl is not going to impact the good welfare of the community, nor should we have to get a license to do that when that's probably the only time I'm ever going to do it again.
Part of the problem is that it's not one time. It's not a single event. I have a huge problem with this over in East Cobb, and it's the folks that are renting these homes, they're doing it all the time. So it's like somebody comes in for two days, three days, five days. They have parties, or they rent a house just for a party, and it's been very disruptive to the neighborhoods.
And I totally agree with you. That's different what I was saying.
Right.
And there ought to be a way to say, if this is a business that they're in, they buy a house for investment, and they do these short-term rentals, that's completely different than you or I wanting to do it on a one-off every now and then. So we have to have some way to know the difference of the two, I think.
Well, and like I said, the whole reason, and I was one of the ones went to Dana about this, it has nothing to do with the hotel motel tax. It has nothing to do with whether or not it's a business. It has to do with the disruption to the neighborhood, and it has been extremely disruptive. And what was found out was the county had no way to enforce anything because of what the current rules are. So, I mean, you know, some of these other things that Dana brought up, I mean, that may be true, but the fact of the matter is this was totally about disruption to the neighborhood.
I have the same. I've had complaints in my district.
It's the same thing. And if they're renting it out for a week at a time or a month at a time, it's impacting the other single-family homes' neighbors and with parking and noise and party and all that. But I don't know how we were going to know about it to begin with unless we get a complaint, kind of like all of our code enforcement complaints that we get. We don't know someone's not in compliance with our ordinance or laws until they... We get a call.
And that's what working with a vendor like one of the ones that I mentioned would allow us to know about what... Which homes are being used for short-term rentals so that we can ensure some basic levels of compliance? For instance, I really like the recommendations that we've seen from Savannah and Hall County as it relates to having an individual that they designate, the owner of the home designates, that can be on the scene within a certain timeframe to address any issues that may come up from the house. Obviously, if it's a large public safety issue, we don't want someone going in to an unsafe situation. That would certainly be something our Public Safety Department would handle, but it could be something as easy as some people playing beer pong in their backyard, and they're being really loud, and the neighbors are being annoyed by it. And that would be an appropriate thing for an individual who is designated by the owner to go on there and address the situation, to not be a burden on their neighbors.
Currently, Dana, when they rent these out, do they go through a realtor?
Most of them just go directly through the website, ma'am.
Okay. So the owners rent it out?
Dana, one of the other things, too, is if we have some issues concerning the fees, is that on our agenda for the legislative breakfast? Rob?
Not as of...
Might be something to consider.
No, I was going to say, I think we can.
Yeah.
Given that it was... We anticipate that the bill's going to be reintroduced, I think that would give us an opportunity as well. But certainly, Commissioner, if we wanted to at least give our local delegation a heads-up as to some things we're thinking about, we can certainly add that to the agenda.
Well, I think also it gives us the opportunity to tell them that it's not just... Yes, the hotel motel tax and all the things Commissioner Weatherford's talking about are true, but what's precipitating the discussion is the nuisance to the neighborhoods. And I think it would be good to be able to get that word to our delegation at the breakfast.
We'll do, sir.
Sounds like we can do this anyhow, because we already got three people doing it.
We can do it right now. However, what I want to caution the board on is if we put together the program that we laid out, and the state does not allow the application fee to happen, then I won't do what I always like to get up here and say that I can do all the time and pay for a program without impacting the general fund. And if we did not have the application fee, I would not be able to get up here and say that, and it would end up being a general fund subsidy in order to manage this program. And that's why I'm giving you the caution the way I am, because of the financial impacts of that.
Dana, I'm sorry. Just for clarification, the application fee, that's the same as the business license fee?
No, ma'am. The application fee...
You're considering those two different things.
The application fee would be on top of the business license.
Okay. If the state didn't allow us to have an application fee, could we still require them to register as a business?
We can still require them to obtain a business license, but it would not generate enough money to even pay for the vendor, never mind the staff that would need to generate to manage the program.
Okay.
Do we have a... Do you know if we'll have a way... Again, I go back to whether this is we're regulating a business or we're regulating an individual that periodically wants to do something like that. To me, those are two distinct categories. If somebody buys a rental home and then they use it for these short-term rentals, they're in fact replacing a motel or whatever. But if someone wants to do it periodically because they're going to have a patient two weeks and they're going to rent it for two weeks, I don't think it's fair to have a business license and an application's fee and all the other things that go along with that just for something that does it periodically. To me, it goes back to the state regulates car sales. If you sell so many cars a month, you become a dealer. If you don't, you get to do so many without having any additional fees or charges. So, I mean, I would support something like this if staff does, as long as it... There's a way to sort out, you know, if it's a business or if it's an occasional.
The only information we would obtain is whether or not a home is being proposed for renting on one of the sites. It does not make a distinction between an individual or a business. So I don't know how the county will be able to do that.
Well, we're going to have to wait to see what the state does anyhow.
Yes, sir.
All right. So why don't we take a five-minute stretch break, and then I will talk to some...
All right, we're back. I just want to stick a note here. As I'm looking at the list of items here, the issue on workforce housing, I... Based on my experience working with this issue over the last year, that's going to take a lot longer than we thought. So we're going to shift that to another day. So we're going to do five, six, and seven for the rest of the afternoon. So that... We'll go to an update on programs and activities by the Neighborhood Safety Commission.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. I'm here only to introduce Ms. Carol Massey, who is the Chair of our Neighborhood Safety Commission. Carol has been on the commission now for three years. She has an appointment from Commissioner Cupid and was recently appointed Chair and has done just a tremendous job over the last few months getting things organized, and she's going to come to today and present some of the things they're doing at Neighborhood Safety Commission. So, Ms. Carol Massey.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Director Heaton and Chairman and Commissioners. I have the pleasure of working with the Neighborhood Safety Commission as Commissioner Cupid's appointee. When I was volun pushed into being Chair in June, I said, "Let me do a little work and learn more about what the priorities and direction should be." I met with Commissioner Weatherford and asked his advice, his view of the commission and expectations, and he said, "I got a great idea. You need to come talk to the Commissioners." I said, "Thank you very much." So here I am. As you are aware, the commission was established in September of 1999 with a specific four-fold thrust to assist efforts to promote safe neighborhoods for both residential and business sectors, to increase local community involvement in neighborhood safety, to identify new neighborhood safety resources, and to strengthen existing safety programs. I know several of you have served on and led that commission, and so I'm honored to follow only this far in your footsteps. So we are your appointees, and I have a couple members, I think, present. So as I call their names, I hope they'll stand to be recognized. Chairman Boyce, you have Karen Halcy, Carl Demir, and Larry Green, who serve on the commission. Commissioner Weatherford, you have Glenn Melson, Tim Houston, and Jeff Wood. Commissioner Burrell, you have Joan Bloom, Carlton Stott, and just until recently, Bud Stumball. And Bud has now relocated to North Georgia, and so that position is vacant. Commissioner Ott, Trish Steiner, Joe Gavallas, and until very recently, Don Towers, who has also stepped down. And lastly, Commissioner Cupid, with Joel Cope, Bishop Brian Hodges, and myself. I just want to really ask if those Commissioners who have vacancies will find some appointees. We have a lot of work that we're trying to get done, and we need the person power to get it done. Some of the historic accomplishments of the commission, you all are aware. It was very active in the false alarm reporting ordinance that was subsequently developed and became law in January 2009. The commission members served as leaders in the founding of the Task Force on Elder Abuse, and several of them continue to serve as officers, members, and advocates. And finally, the community awareness discussion panels. Joel Cope and Trish Steiner have led that effort for several years, convening various community representatives here in this chamber and televising programs around safety issues. With the budget constraints and concerns of the last couple of years, the decision has been made to try to offer that community education in other ways. And so that committee is now researching just how we're going to make that change. In August, this past August, the commission started a very simplified strategic planning process and identified four focus areas for the coming months. We formed committees around those areas, which include community awareness and engagement. Trish Steiner, Joel Cope are working on that, continuing to work with that. We created a new committee looking at public safety interface, and Joan Bloom, Joe Gavallas, Karen Halcy, and Tim Houston are going to be working in that area. You know, we want to broaden our look beyond just police force. Typically, when folks think of neighborhood safety or safety issues, the focus has been on the police, cop police. We are very proud of Chief Register and the work that he's done in just the short time he's been here, but we want to look at how we can support the activities of the other departments within public safety, which of course include fire, animal services, and 911 EMS. So on last Friday, we had a discussion group in which Chief Kreider from the Fire Department, Chief Register, Director Heaton, and Steve Gaynor from the Fraternal Order of Police came and talked about some of the public safety issues and ways that our commission may be supportive to those departments and leaders. And so we'll continue to work in that vein to strengthen our support for those areas. We're also looking at programs for children and youth. We have some very serious issues among the children in Cobb County: homelessness, human trafficking, and an issue that I'm particularly interested in and working on with another group, the suspension and expulsion of youth from schools. What happens when kids are put out of school? They're in the community often unsupervised, and that can lead to crime and safety issues for them. And so we'll be looking at some of those issues. And finally, behavioral health and substance abuse. The first presentation here today talked about what happens with citizens who are plagued with these challenges. So our committees are new. We're restructuring. We're going through a planning process and trying to identify activities, resources, and ways that we can facilitate improved knowledge, awareness in our communities around public safety. One of the things I really want to emphasize, and I'm going to go on out on this limb very carefully, in our discussion on Friday around public safety interface, one of the things that has repeatedly come up is the recruitment and retention challenges around public safety officers, both police and fire. What makes our county jobs appealing? How do we recruit quality applicants, and how do we retain folks once they've gone through the extensive training offered by Cobb County? They become prime targets for other county employers, other city employers. And so we had a very lively discussion around ways to support those officers and retaining them. And this is the limb I'm going on. I'm going to share with you that I'm from a county in a state out west. I won't name it. I know that's not popular in Georgia. I've learned that much. But, you know, I was a county employee in mental health and in public health and for many years. But those folks who worked in public safety had a much better retirement plan than I did. I don't begrudge them of that because they took higher risk. So out of our discussion on Friday and my personal knowledge, I really want to ask on behalf of our commission that you all continue to explore an alternative retirement plan for those folks who are putting their lives at risk as a way to help us keep them and give them a reason to really want to stay in Cobb County after we've invested the money to recruit and develop them. So that's my branch that I'm standing out on, and it really concludes my presentation. I just wanted to give you an update, introduce our commission, reintroduce our commission to you, and ask for your support as we are going forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Ott?
I just want to let you know, and you may not have gotten the word, but I actually appointed Andy Smith to fill the third spot. So if you haven't gotten the word, Kim can give you Andy's contact information, because he may not have come because he didn't know.
I apologize. He hasn't. He did not attend on Friday, but he did attend last month.
Okay.
So yes, we do have him. I apologize for that omission.
And I'm still working on my replacement for Bud.
Yes.
He was a great asset, as did Commissioner Ott. I served on the Neighborhood Safety Commission for ten years.
She worked good, too.
And chaired it for a couple of years. So it's one of my... So it's one of my favorite boards, so you're doing a great job, as I can see.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, just ditto. Thank you for all that you've been doing as a new appointee to the Board and now Chair. Look forward to your continued service and exploring some of the ideas that you shared with us today.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, and you're doing a great job, and I'm proud of you coming up and doing this today. And I think it's something you ought to do periodically, give us an update, you know, not quarterly, but certainly every six months or so. And those ideas that you have are innovative, and I think it's something we ought to consider. I think it's a good idea to look at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In the past, we had a Chairman's Report. Is that what you're basically giving us now? Because along with that, you, the Chairman gave a report on attendance so that we could see how our appointees were doing, if they were, you know, devoting the time.
Commissioner Burrell, I think this is something I just asked her ad hoc to do because she's new and introduced herself, and I think she'll do that at the regular next update.
Our bylaws. I'll call for a Chairman's Report after the January meeting. And so as Commissioner Weatherford said, he asked me to come and do an introduction. And then following our January meeting, I will have statistics and information. And hopefully, we'll have our plans further developed, and I will provide that to you then. Thank you.
Well, we certainly need more volunt pushers like you. No, seriously, it's, I'm very impressed, particularly with your creative approach to some of the new committees, because it reflects the challenge, changing nature of public safety. And I really look forward to seeing your report in January.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today. Hey, let's look it down here. Our next one is the IT Digital Strategy. Sharon?
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. County Manager. If you remember, in September of 2017, we brought before the Board and selected a vendor to assist us with developing the digital strategy for the county to provide some guidelines on where we're going as IT becomes more and more important. You can go into the next one. I'll let them talk about strategy with that. A copy of the full plan was sent to each of you this afternoon. And what we'll do after this presentation today, we will not bring that back forward for adoption until you've had time to look for it, through it. It's a very detailed, thick plan, and I'll be available for any questions you have before that. So with that, I'd like to introduce Nestor Holensky. Nestor is from iVision, the vendor that we selected out of the seven vendors that participated, and he'll present the overview or summary of that plan for you this morning, this afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll blast through the slides for you. So as Sharon pointed out, we started this quite a while ago, went, assembled a great deal of information prior to arriving here with documentation, prior strategies that were done, additional budget information. We then conducted interviews with over 60 stakeholders throughout the county. We also had invited and got attendance from several of the cities, Smyrna, Ostell, and Marietta. Following that, we then developed findings based on all of the input that we received and then working with the IS group. And I want to emphasize that this is a collaborative effort. iVision is basically there just to assist the department itself in developing the strategic plan, so it is focused on the capabilities and the direction that Cobb County is moving in. We had a SWOT analysis that we did with the IS team, where they basically brought everything out on the table in terms of their concerns and challenges. And at the end of the process, we developed a five-year strategic plan that we hope is aligned with the direction of the organization as well as the county. So when we talk about digital government, what are we talking about? We're talking about the use of technology, especially these days, the Internet, to improve the government services for all of the stakeholders. And by the stakeholders, basically, we're talking about two groups. First and foremost, it's the citizens, then you have business, you have the county employees, as well as your interaction with other governments. And digital government itself isn't a goal. It's really, think of it as more of a framework of how do you accomplish government services that can become more affordable and sustainable through the use of technology. So in terms of benefits that we look for from digital government is a whole variety of them. We like to focus on the fact that we're looking at a seamless citizen experience, user focus, the ability to improve processes through the use of technology, and provide, you know, more effective information processing and access. So looking at the current state of Cobb County, the IS group has a vision, sorry, their mission is to partner with the other agencies. So it's not a matter of IS coming in and saying, "Do this, do that." It's really focusing on what the agencies need and how can IS come in and assist them. But as a vision, IS is responsible to be on the forefront of understanding what technologies are out there and then coming back with information about, "Hey, here are tools that are being used by your peers, by other organizations, that you may want to consider." So what does the story look like? Over the last 10 years, there's been a huge increase in demand for the services provided by IS, driven primarily because of developments in technology. And in order to accomplish that, we need to have a stable base for this technology to be built on. Currently, Cobb County ranges from having state-of-the-art systems to very aging systems, and that needs to be addressed. I've spoken about the increase in demand, but basically, this is a story that was told over and over again. We need to move forward because we're being crippled with the flood of information that we received. So I explained from the process how we went about it, interviewing a lot of people, getting a lot of inputs, and had these emerging themes that came out. No surprise, mobility. Mobility needs on the part of the citizens, mobility needs on part of the departments, the need for more analytical tools. Your agencies are being flooded with data, flooded with information. What do you do with it? How do you analyze it? How do you make it practicable? The need for application upgrades. You've got a lot of aging applications out there that are running on old equipment. They need maintenance. They need support, and that's just not acceptable. So, and the role of IS is also evolving from being just a technology-oriented organization that's looking at hardware and software, but instead is now moving towards how do you use that technology in your organizations? This chart shows the phenomenal amount of growth that's taken place over these 10 years. If you look at some of the items, the use of Internet bandwidth, that gives you a good estimate of how much the Internet's being used. You were running three megabits of data back in 2007. That's increased to 2,500 megabits per second. Looking at the number of, for example, records in OnBase, those are your, that's your document management system. You had about 300,000 documents in it in 2007. You now have over 11 million, close to 12 million. This is 2717, so you already exceeded that number. In the meantime, if you look at those growth numbers, look at that bottom number. Your IT staff is basically flat, so they're trying to support all of this growth with basically no increase in headcount. A satisfaction survey was sent out to the IS department, rather, not the IS department, all of the agencies, to ask about the role of IT and how important it is. And it got huge scores for dependency. In other words, everybody needs it, but they also recognize that in terms of capacity, that the IS department is pretty, is running very lean. And whereas they are responsive, we got very positive notes on responsiveness, they understand that there's only so much gas that the organization can provide. So based on all of that information, we, as a team, developed a digital strategy. So, high level, the technology is mission critical. I think everybody understands that. It's being driven by expectations, and these expectations are being driven, by the most part, by the citizenry who is using technology on a day-to-day basis, all right? It's much more so than 10 years ago. Everybody is mobile. Everybody communicates via technology, via mobile technology. They pay their bills. They get access to information. So Cobb County, in order to be responsive, has to be able to address those needs with some sort of environment that is anytime, anywhere, and on any platform or device. These are the same challenges all organizations have these days. IS again sees itself in two roles. One, an enabler, so how do we provide this information or these capabilities through the use of technology? And a driver coming to the organization, coming to the agency, saying, "Hey, are you aware of this? Are you aware of that?" In our interviews with all of these different entities, we had some consistent themes that came out. So we've listed a bunch of them, but self-service came up over and over again. And it's not just self-service for the citizens to be able to access information, but it's also self-service within the agencies. Some of the technologies, some of the applications are so complex that the responsible individual has actually have to pull IS people in to help them get through some of the analytics. So you need a new generation of applications that makes this easier to get to. Storage capacity, huge problem. And it's not just documents, because documents are actually very small. Video is killing your storage systems. So you have a tremendous amount of video, and it's going to be even more so, because that's become a very common medium to use. Easy to share, easy ways to get access across departments, across agencies. We had time and again individuals who would say, "I have this information, but I'd really like to be able to tap into XYZ agency," and vice versa. So how do you do that? And then better reporting tools. The struggle to provide reports where people start to have to fall back on Excel as the medium for managing information makes it very difficult to use. So we came across, we came up with four strategic goals. First, solidify the foundation. I've spoken about the fact that you need to improve things just to get them up to snuff, let alone provide a platform that you can build new technology on. Mature the application platform. What we're talking about here are bringing up all of the applications to a point where you either upgrade them or you may need to replace them so that you have some kind of a uniform platform or across which all the organizations can work. Then the real goal is the ability to expand digital services, to get all of those nuggets that I spoke about earlier, and this is all wrapped around by your resources. So we put together a model, and what I want to emphasize here is although the model shows the dependencies, in other words, it's logical to have a good, solid foundation upon which you have an application platform that can deliver the digital services, these are not mutually exclusive. In other words, you're going to have activities taking place simultaneously in all of them. They're not, you don't wait for the foundation to be fully completed. And the other point I'd like to make is that even though this is a forward-looking strategy, you already are doing a lot of things in all three of these areas. And then the align the resources is actually the story about your personnel. So I'm going to walk you quickly through each of the goals. So we talk about, we organize them by listing the objectives of each goal, and then we provide just a few sample initiatives. And the idea is that over time, the goals are going to remain stable. The objectives shouldn't change, but the initiatives will come in and out over time. When you look at the final report, the big document, you'll see all of the initiatives that are listed under each of those objectives. So under solidify the foundation, I've emphasized the reliable, stable, and agile platform, but security is a real concern, all right? You need to have a multi-layered security strategy that starts from the desktop, goes through your servers, and goes throughout the rest of the organization. And it's technology security, physical security, et cetera. In terms of the major initiatives that are underway, you've already selected a site for the new data center that was approved, and so steps are already moving underway to do that. Regulatory compliance is something that you won't be able to shy away from. So that can be assisted with software, but you also have to have the appropriate processes in place. And on the upside, of course, if this does get done, then there are cost reductions that take place. And they're not necessarily hard dollars from one piece of software to another, but they also, they tend to cascade into lower labor costs because you don't need to have that many people supporting a particular environment. Mature the application platform. That's a tough one, because that does mean investing in either upgrades or replacements. In some cases, you want to, you may be able to extend the life, but the idea is if you can provide user-friendly applications, then the ability to manipulate them within an agency becomes that much easier. We identified during, of course, our discussions, a number of duplicate systems. And so being able to agree on one or another provision of service within the groups can also save money. Upward the benefits, of course, you have a more secure environment, and you have a more agile environment where you can introduce new services and provide them to the users. The idea is that if you, well, one of the risks is if you don't go about doing this, then you're going to continue to suffer with increased labor costs to support an aging environment. So now we're talking about the ability to provide digital services. By doing that, it's, you meet with the mission of providing access to information anywhere, anytime, anyplace, leveraging the new technologies that are out there to improve your business processes. There's still an awful lot of manual labor that takes place, everything from moving documents to calculating information. And one of the big initiatives, of course, is providing mobile services wherever possible. So every agency has been talking to us about mobile service initiatives that they have within their organization. And of course, you know, we want to provide an umbrella under which these all can work. The benefits, ultimately, an enhanced citizen experience. And the risk of not doing this, of course, is the opposite of that. Citizens are not happy.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask you to cut this short, because we have one more program, and we have Commissioners leaving at 4:00, so. How many more charts do you have?
We're, boom, just one more chart.
Okay.
All right. Basically, what we're saying, pardon?
Okay.
I've got a stopwatch going. So on the resource side, one of the surveys that we did is to analyze what people were doing, and a huge percentage of time was spent on maintenance, and I spoke about this over and over again. We want to reduce that slice and basically say, "If we do a bunch of things, we can help make that slice smaller and move it to the better slice," which is, you know, the improvement and innovation of materials for use in the IT world. So that's actually the highlights. Are there any quick questions that can?
Any questions?
Okay.
Commissioner Cupid.
When is, I think we're rolling this out in phases. Is that how it's going to work?
No, I mean, digital strategy is really a direction.
Okay.
Let me get a pen. So the strategy is exactly what it says, a strategy. You know, as we decide where we go forward with IT, you need to have some direction for that, and the strategy provides things. That's why you saw those four goals. Solidify the foundation, you know, expand digital services, you know, those are your goals. There are initiatives under each of those that we've already identified.
Yes, I remember this very robust tool that seemed to dovetail with a lot of the goals of this. It was an online interface where constituents can go in and pull down data from the dashboard.
That is, actually meets one of the goals we have on here, which is that digital strategy where it says, "Increase the use of analytical tools."
Yes.
That's a project we brought forward, actually, that's under that goal.
Okay.
So it's a, we would use it kind of as a litmus paper. When that project came... When that project came forward, if you guys adopt this strategy, and you say, "We want to increase analytics and increase the, you know, decision-making using data," then we would look and go, "Okay, I need to look at bringing those types of projects forward."
Okay.
Does that help? And as I said, we'll go over this all with you, and just like any of the strategic plans we bring forward, any specific projects would have to come forward for approval that require funding.
Very quickly, the one chart that you had that showed the growths in the last twelve years, or ten years, or eleven years. I'm assuming we've got some kind of strategy in place to get our staff up to speed now if you've got budgetary constraints or lifted a little bit.
I'm trying to be more efficient.
I mean, how many people do you need?
Well, look, here's the guy, here's your boundaries.
Yeah.
Eight point four six, that's the military rate. The budget process, you know what it is.
Yes, sir.
It's the county manager, he's your boss, he's got to find a way to do some of this under eight point four six mils. Okay? So I get what you're saying here, but we're not going to use this to bust the military.
That's not what it's for, actually. I mean, that's not what it's presented for.
What I'm saying is, it's pretty obvious that we've grown tremendously, and yet we haven't grown the staff. I just think, need to work toward a strategy so that you limit some of the constraints that we have on staff.
Right. And if you, if the, if this strategic plan is approved, it gives me direction to know where we put priorities.
Some of the problem on staff, too, has been, you know, it's, we hear a lot about the job market right now, but you're talking very qualified people that, quite frankly, our pay scales do not come close to matching. So it's a lot more difficult. One of the things that, yes, well, one of the things that we've talked about and the county has looked into it was kind of, in some cases, going more the temp, where if you have a particular project that you need someone that has certain capabilities, that they come in and do that, so that you can, you know, use your money on the full-time.
We do some of that today. You've seen us bring projects forward where we have program management included in that project cost from the vendor. Any further questions?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
All right, now the business continuity plan?
Another one we've been working on for about a year. This one is a very participatory process where we had all of the agencies, all of the elected offices, and we've been working together as a joint project with EMA and IT and IS, where we've been working to pull together a business continuity plan for the county, and we have a vendor this morning who will also be presenting that, Bold Planning. That is Rick Memberley from Bold Planning, just lost my notes. We'll be presenting that this morning, a very high level again, what we'll do with that one. That is an automated application, if you remember. So what we'll do with that is we will get you all access to that application once the presentation is finished. Again, allow you time to go through that business continuity plan and bring it back forward at a later date for your approval.
Okay, we're ready.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, it's an honor to be here, Commissioners and Mr. County Manager. I'm going to be real quick. I sit on a school board in Williamson County, and I know how, in Tennessee, I know how it gets toward the end of the meeting, so I'm going to be real fast. But it's somewhat soothing that I'm last on the agenda, in part because if you look at what you've seen today, and you did have one heck of an agenda, a lot going on, but imagine if the operations of Veterans Court are interrupted, of the drug court is interrupted. Imagine coming to the final timetable of an economic development situation at the end of the negotiations, and for whatever reason, the operations of economic development and the many partners who support that, as Dana had a whole list of partners who help with the economic development of the community. So imagine something has happened serious in the community, whether it be man-made or natural, that interrupts all of that. Well, what we do through the efforts of EMA and IS is we have worked with the county to implement a business continuity planning strategy, which I'm not going to get into a lot of the background on the company. In fact, I'm not going to talk about the company at all, other than to say, we've now implemented our ten-thousandth plan, except to say that it was created by the founders over the frustration that it was difficult to get a lot of the stakeholders on the same page, to do the things that make sure that services are provided even when times are particularly tough. So over the years, we've developed this online solution, which you've been working on for the last year or so, that helps facilitate the process of the stakeholder engagement through all of the entities within the county that are so important to keeping the county competitive with our home in Nashville. Commissioner Weatherford, I noticed you gave us a nice shout-out there, thanks. So what the solution does is it addresses the people, places, and things that need to be addressed in advance, so that when things go wrong, that the people know what to do, they know how to do it, they know where to do it, they know where they're supposed to be, and they've got access to the vital records. The presentation moment before showed you what an impact that IS has on the operation of the county. One of the key tenets to this system is that we collect all of the information on all the vital records, and we kind of prioritize them, and we assess what would happen if these vital records are not available, but come up with a plan to make sure that regardless of what's going on, whether it's something that happens that's detrimental to the county for a few hours, or, you know, days, or a week, or whatever, that the county is prepared to do what needs to be done so that those vital records are available to the county. So I've kind of gone through that. I'm going to zip through that, too. In fact, I'm going to zip through a lot of this, but I do want to point out that what's happened here in the last year is that the existing plans have all been reviewed, they've been updated, the customized environment, which you will have an access to, has been developed, and we've even reached the point where we're doing planned maintenance and upgrades to give better visibility between departments. In fact, this collaboration is kind of a key tenet to business continuity planning. In effect, we facilitate that, in some cases, we almost force that type of collaboration, so that you're prepared for whatever comes down the pike. This is, this slide actually was going to be our last slide, but I've zipped it up because I want to show you something. We have done an evaluation of the plans as they have been developed, and it doesn't show up real well there, but if you look in the far-right column, there's a lot of green. That means that these individual elements, and, you know, just scan through those just a little bit, teams and responsibilities, facilities, essential functions, orders of succession, if one person's not available, who will be in charge, delegations of authority, how you're going to notify, on and on and on. So far, you've got good grades on all of these, meaning that the collaboration has occurred to a large degree, and that these aspects of the plan have been completed. And one of the reasons this works is because of the fact that it allows at a single point for you to manage the contact data, which will change sometimes on a regular basis, so that when a change in a position occurs, a change in a responsibility occurs, you change the entry only one time, but it flows throughout the plan, so when you have to call on that plan, it knows who the current person is, who fits into that specific responsibility based on the orders of succession, et cetera. One of the other things that I like to talk about is facilities. Often, when you're in the beginning of the early stages of planning for an emergency, you say, "Okay, if this facility is not available, then we can go over to another facility." And if that was not available, we can go to another. Well, one of the things that you've done here is you have assessed the capacity of each facility and produced a deconfliction report, because what often happens in the planning stage is a lot of people claim the same facility, yet that facility may not have the capability, so the report, the deconfliction report helps your planners determine or isolate those things, "Well, we've made a mistake here because we've overcommitted that facility." The same is true with the vital records and resources, we mentioned that just a bit. Here's an example of a vital records report, and all of the systems that you saw at least referenced in the presentation before, they are included in the vital records reports so that you can make sure that those are properly managed. And I think I talked a little bit about personnel. Essential functions is another key, something that you'll want to think about, and that is making sure that you have identified exactly those things that are essential. In other words, if you foresee an outage of a few hours, there may be some things that can wait, but as that outage goes longer, or that emergency goes longer, there, you know, for example, the economic development, maybe they can hold tight for, you know, a few hours, but they can't hold tight for a few days. So these essential functions are identified and assessed based on the speed of recovery that's needed in an emergency. In fact, here's a report that shows essential functions that have been listed within the first twenty-four hours. Then if the emergency goes longer, these are other functions that will be essential. With that, I'll, have I covered it properly? Have I covered it quickly?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Good for Rick. So what kind of questions do we have? Told you I could do it in five minutes.
I think the point to remember here is that we're giving you guys the opportunity to look at this plan, so take a look at it. If you have any questions, you can reach out to EMA, myself and Sean back here. Sean, you want to stand up? Sean will be your point of contact if you have any questions on any of the facilities that we've set, or any of the different departments. We've had exercises, we've had numerous trainings on this plan, I feel like they've done an excellent job of communication here, and I think you'll be happy with the end result.
I got to say, Cassie, this is the best-kept secret in Cobb County, all the stuff that you've already done.
Yes, sir.
So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
It's, a lot of credit goes to Sharon, too. It's one of the things, when she first showed up, she said, "What's your plan here?" And the answer was?
We don't have one.
There isn't.
No, we just shared. Military background.
No, my hat's off to you, really, seriously, so thank you for all you've done.
They've taken the long run, but we just did the IT.
I didn't see where I was supposed to go, I just didn't see.
You're going to come to my place.
Get-away kid, it was yours, sir.
All right, we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we're adjourned. Somebody told me, yes.